You look at the MSW, Steve. That amount of value was taken out and put under the COLA section instead of the Town Valuation section.
Yeah.
So that's how we came down to it. The town got the revenue for it and reduced their obligation. But that's why the valuation dropped.
Right, and they don't have a...
We're kind of off topic. Can you hold what you're asking?
Oh, sorry.
Just because it's... We've just dialed her in and now we're off on a tangent. So I just wanted to make sure we go in order and then hold that, Steve. Make sure we get that clarified, what you're asking. And then we can have it in the notes as well, because we'll miss the recording of the beginning of that conversation.
Right. So do you want to start with two 2020-21 operating budget and default budget?
The package you have tonight is really just a listing of the warrant articles that we presently have, all that we anticipate. The top page is a summary. The operating budget actually looks like a 10 cent decrease. All the tax impact are based on the default rate.
So that last column is the impact on the tax rate.
Does Diane have this?
Not yet. We're still trying to print it. The support staff called the harmony agreement. It'd be an article for that. That has the potential for a 6 cent increase. We've got an article for the elementary school and in engineering, which will have a $1.23 increase. We have a special ed allocation from surplus, which theoretically has zero tax impact. Yes, it would be additional revenue in the following year to reduce taxes, but it's coming from current year surplus. So the monies have already been raised. And we're looking for repair at the front of the high school on the pillars and the clock tower, which has potential for a nickel increase. Total appropriation in our request comes to $17,767,128 or a $1.24 per thousand increase in taxes, $186 on a $150,000 home. We're just printing them.
Diane, we're having copier difficulties, so we weren't able to print very many copies of this summary. So once we get through that, we can scan it. Scan it to right there if you can.
Okay. Yeah, it was fine. I only heard part of it, but Tom said, so what is the impact of all of the total impact of all of those warrant articles and the operating budget?
$1.24 increase.
Okay. Great. And did Steve already ask you what... How much per thousand? We had a conversation earlier. I had some information from Karen and we just wanted to make sure that we knew what number you were using for to base your increase on.
Yeah, back to one of our first meetings where we showed the difference in rate from year to year as it was changed by the valuation. What was on the forms from Department of Revenue was $640,657,398.
Okay.
So that's what my calculations are based on.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So the board has looked at some warrant articles that we expect to have. And as happened in the past, the Budget Committee has an opportunity to have their vote recorded along with the article. So if we look at the first one. Show them off. That's the operating budget article. Standard language. Proposed operating budget is $16,858,207, which is the numbers that we've been seeing for the last couple of meetings. We are specifying the default at $16,569,534. Under the vote section, there's a little bit of explanation. Budgeted revenue right now is $328,000 higher than the budget revenue in the budget we're currently operating against. The gross budget increase is $264,000. Theoretically, a net reduction of $63,814 or 10 cents.
Can I have a point of clarification, Tom, on that?
Certainly.
So I understand it's going to be $16,858,207. And last year on the warrant article, it was listed as $16,475,148. And that's a difference of $383,67. And you're saying $264,449. Where am I missing the other amount of money?
You've asked all the warrant articles, which were added to the appropriation. Teacher's CBA for one.
Okay.
So that's added in.
Okay.
Into the $16,593.
That's part of how we got to the $16,593 that I'm showing there. Under the fiscal 20 voted. Okay, that includes the operating budget article plus the CBA articles.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. One thing we've not discussed with you before is the default budget. The board went through it the other evening. And for those who may not be aware, there were some changes made as a result of legislation and other interpretations over the last couple of years. This is the first time we're really seeing some impact. As always, the default budget is the amounts that were approved for this current year added to or subtracted from based on certain other contractual obligations and changes in debt service and the standard language. So if I take the $16,593,758, that was the total value appropriation for the year. I'm going to reduce by the change in debt service. Since our bonds, both the high school bond and the CTC middle school bond are level principal, the interest changes each year. So I'll be... And in the operating budget, you already saw I take almost $21,000 decrease in the interest. So that's coming out of the default. So I don't need that. You previously approved a two-year teacher agreement. So I'm adding the second year of that agreement as it was approved. Not necessarily for any people that I've added or anything else, but on a warrant article last year, it was disclosed to be $106,000. So that's what I'm adding to the default this year. Health insurance. In the past, we played with a number called guaranteed maximum rate increase, which frequently wasn't the number that we actually ended up with right after the vote was concluded. Sometimes was high, sometimes well. It was never... The actual rate was never higher than the guaranteed maximum, but it was frequently lower. And at that time, we were putting the guaranteed maximum rate increase into the default budget. Two things happening now. One is with school care, we already have the renewal rates. So we're not playing with the benefits of GMRs. But perhaps more importantly is under the new interpretation of default budgets, we're only going to include those... The insurance cost for those folks that you have a contractual obligation to. So it's for those people covered by the professional agreement and those people covered by the support staff agreement. So your non-union support, your administrators, SAU staff, aren't contractually... You're not contractually obligated to pay anymore for health insurance for us. So that increase for those personnel are not included in the default. Theoretically, if we end up with the default budget, the board could on July 1st say, we're not paying that much anymore. We're doing something different. And I don't have a CBA to say otherwise. So the default budget does not include other than those people covered by the negotiated agreements.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Okay, so in one of the presentations, it was given to us that there were going to be a reduction in staff. And that was... Did you enter that into the default budget too? You make an adjustment or it remained the same?
Okay, that's the next line.
Thank you.
See, you don't need the paper. You're right there. Okay, another change that was made with default budgets. If we have included a reduction... That doesn't sound quite right, but if we have budgeted staff reductions in the operating budget as proposed, the current theory now is if I can do without them for the operating budget, then I should not be including them in the default.
Counterintuitive.
It actually says if I'm going to budget that way, then I should recognize it. Perhaps in some cases, not here certainly. Some areas, they might say so. We're not going to budget that decrease. That's not the way we work. There is... We do have one reduction, which is offset by an increase that we discussed with the operating budget. Under the default budget, that constitutes a transfer rather than a reduction, because obviously we can't have an increase in the default budget. But that constitutes a transfer or a reassignment. So it's only those other votes that we told you we had budgeted reductions for. And that's with salaries, FICA taxes, benefits. That's just under $183,000 reduction. The other adjustment that we always make to default budgets is one-time expenditures. Although we had it in the operating budget for more than one period, we've just gone through an accreditation process and there was about $32,000 in the operating budget this year that I'm taking out of the default as a one-time appropriation. It's not in the operating budget for next year. It shouldn't be in the default for this year. All those changes come to a net reduction of $24,224, which puts the default at $16,569,534, which is what's reflected in the warrant article language up above. Okay, Diane, have you checked your email? Probably have the documents now.
All right, thank you. All right, I do. Thank you.
Good job, Patty.
Those recycled electrons. Are there any questions on this article?
Was there anyone I can ask a question?
Go right ahead.
So here's the reduction of staff. We were told at one time, I think it was off the top of my head, 6.2 positions?
No, not very many. There are several part-time positions. Didn't that...
I believe it was a calculation of, you know, around six.
No, it's not six names, no.
No, what the six might have been is the last time we talked about the number of physicians or FTEs that were grant-funded physicians was 6.7. No, the staff reduction is not that high. I think it's 2.5.
That sounds more familiar. Do we accept 2.5 or you wanted to consume your time and...
Well, back on December 11th, when we went over a work paper, the discussion, I had notes that we talked about staff reductions. There was two at Lakeway and two from the middle school slash high school.
Right.
And two part-time positions.
That's right. That's what I had.
And what increase?
You want to push off that one?
The default treats as a reassignment or a reallocation.
So for a net, then, would've been something a lot less than what we're talking about at that time. And it's reflected in the number that you have here.
You had four there.
Four, yes.
Two plus two plus two halves, right?
Well, the two part-timers, I don't know what the actual...
Four plus two plus two part-time.
Less the one offsetting increase.
Okay, that would still be more than what's reflected in what we're talking about today in the budget.
Then I'll accept your number.
Okay, so how does that translate back into the budget that we're about to...
The operating budget is as presented there.
Okay.
All those people are out. And the one person is added in.
So it's current then?
For the default budget, the one is a swap, a transfer, so there's no change for that. And the others are out of the default, which is not what happened in previous years. Due to the new interpretation. Previously, whatever you approved last year would stay in there. So we're getting a bit sharper on that.
So it's time for Steve. I know Steve has some questions, but I don't want to forget that.
The only question I had was, it seems to be a continuous struggle, at least for me, in terms of the town valuation and how he put in that pilot program. There was a lot of conversation about imputed value, about backing that number in. And I guess I'm still not really clear in my mind. Under the old system, if you would, I mean, we would be spending... We would be spending roughly... Under the old valuation ethic, we would be, instead of spending 15.6 cents on the tax rate, we would have been spending about 12 and a quarter cents. It didn't seem like a lot, but if we were extracting...
And from my perspective, it perhaps is a bit worse, because now the value of the dam is out. So any increase is shared by the remaining taxpayers. The value is for the dam fixed.
Although, I mean, I'm just being stubborn on this, but if at the time, at the time that the pilot was negotiated, and we're just going to use some random numbers here, but if the value of the dam in that pilot program was arrived at, represented, let's just say even 20% of the town value, okay? Then... And then you have the balance, $640 million, whatever. So is that $640 million changes? If next year it goes from 640 to 650, then the dam, instead of being the 20% figure, would be 19.92% or whatever.
But it's out of the grant list, if you will, now.
Yeah.
So the $400,000, whatever, was a fixed amount for the five years.
But it's not like the school is raising its own money void of the town. So somehow the...
Any changes in the town budget will also be against the lower property value, because that revenue source is now fixed for five years.
Right.
But respectfully, this really is a conversation for the select board, not for the school board.
Well, yeah.
You have nothing to say about the answer.
No, no. The only thing I'm worried about is whether we're picking the right figure in terms of what our... What the actual tax rate increases is.
I used the numbers that Department of Revenue calculated your tax bill on in December.
So you're saying or thinking that for every $100,000 you spend, it's going to be 15.6 cents extra for $100,000 you spend. It's going to be 15.6 cents on the tax rate. Because I just don't feel comfortable with that, but maybe you're right.
Would you care to have your committee vote on this article? What's your recommendation?
Well, do we want to do it one by one or one way?
Just as well.
Okay. Well, yes, we can. Diane, you accept that? Tom's asking if we should vote on these articles as he explains them.
Yeah, I guess on the operating budget, we're pretty set on that. Yeah, I guess we could vote that way.
Any discussion or additional questions on... So Tom, you want to restate that? We're going to be voting to support the gross budget of $16,858,207.
Yes.
And as we were going on, that's the gross budget. And we're anticipating revenues against that of $7,101,200.
Yes.
And do I have a motion to support the gross budget of $16,858,207?
I make a motion to support that.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 So that is four to nothing.
And Diane, aye.
Aye. Chair.
I know. Well, I only vote to break ties.
What's the total number?
It was seven.
So four is a quorum.
Five is a quorum. Four is a quorum. Five is a quorum. Just to be consistent on that, I've been pressured on that over the years and I think that it's...
Is that because you're chair?
Yes.
Four to zero. I was being... I didn't know you were chair.
Rather than jumping in and out, I mean, choosing to vote on some and not others. If I send the wrong message, break the ties.
So yeah, that's fine. Four to zero.
Yes.
So the next one we have, the school board and the support staff have reached a agreement that has been ratified by both groups. At the middle of the page, you'll see a couple of bullet points. It is a two-year agreement. Wage charts increase 25 cents in each cell in each year. Those that are off the chart get 35 cents each year. The wage increase calculates to 2.73% for year one, 2.65% for year two. In addition, secretaries and paraprofessionals gain an additional holiday. The administrative assistants are already year-round and already have the maximum of holidays, so they get nothing additional. In year two, the paraprofessionals only get an additional day. The secretary does not get an additional day, and again, the admin assistants don't get an additional day.
And how many days do they already have?
I knew you were going to ask that.
Yeah, I didn't bring the board.
Paraprofessionals currently have four.
Thank you.
Four that fall within the school year.
Four paid holidays. Well, there are other holidays within the school year for which they are not paid. That's part of it.
There's 10 total. 10 total, and they currently have four.
Where does the 25 cent increase play the competitive role with the surrounding districts?
With the surrounding districts?
With surrounding districts.
We are currently on par. I mean, they're nearly identical, the hourly offerings.
Pretty even-keel, yeah.
We do know that there are some businesses in the area that are raising their minimum wage. We're not competing with them. We're depending on the fact that we have people who want to work with kids and who appreciate working in the school environment and the benefits that the community generously affords our employees. We're not trying to match dollar per dollar.
No, you can't. There's no true comparison there.
You can't do it.
Our employees and their employees are whole different stuff.
So are we seeing wage sales interesting as profile, as Lisbon, as all of those?
They're very close. They're within a few cents in each category.
And how many... What percentage of the staff is off staff?
Most.
25 out of 40?
Yeah.
I believe that it was 25 out of the 40s.
Or off staff. Or off staff. That's what she asked.
Which means that 35 cents is the active figure for most.
For most of them, yes.
Yeah.
The... So the other item which impacts cost, we presently have a professional development pool, which is established for the support staff. It's $150 for each member of the bargaining unit, as we said at the beginning of the year. They can use it during the course of the year, up to $150 at a time. At June 1, if there's anything left, not expended, those individuals who may have spent more for their professional development than $150 can apply for up to the difference between what they spent to $400. In this negotiated agreement, we've reduced the pool that's set up at the beginning of the year by $25 to $125 per unit member, which actually leads to an $1,150 decrease in your first year costs.
Okay. Can I go back to the staff, David?
Do you want?
Okay, so on the staff, David, if you had that many off steps, so you get to, I don't know how many steps there are, let's just say...
13.
13? When you get to 13, do they get... How does their salary increase work? So is it just 35 cents above the last and they are held at the same level? Or do they get an additional 35 cents each year?
There are no steps beyond that, so it's whatever their current rate is plus 35 cents. But you'd have to know how long they've been off step and the changes that have been made over the last 20 years to actually, you know, look at an individual.
But what's the last step? What is the amount on the last step? Let's go ahead, Danny. How many... What is the salary rate for the last step?
For paras right now, $15.53.
So $15.53, they would get 30 cents above that? Or do they get additional because they worked there so many years?
If they're on... If they're on step 13 now, then it would go up next year. That's the wrong chart, I'm sorry. Yeah, it would go up 35 cents from wherever they are this year, if they're already either at top step or off top step. And in each of the two years. And each of the two years, yes.
And did we make any changes from the initial?
No. No, the board recognizes that there are other communities who treat their people differently. Some of those communities have other opportunities for employment and spouses have opportunities to get equivalent or better coverage for less money. We don't see us in that particular position.
The discussion this summer from the administrators was that there was an issue with hiring qualified paraprofessionals.
Yes.
And I think there was a consensus that, thinking back, you're the one who made that comment. And I think there was a consensus that, making back, you're the one who made that comment, Tom, that you can't pay your tax bill with your health insurance.
My insurance premium, yes.
That's right. And that, I think there was a consensus, Diane, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I thought that that was one of the main points, if you would, that came out of that this summer's activity or if you would, was that maybe we needed to look at increasing the hourly rage, wage, not rage, sorry. Wage and, wage and maybe cutting back on the insurance package that made we attract people that might be more productive in the system.
And it was the feeling.
I think there are two things. One, what is the salary? So if I'm, if I'm wrong, if twenty-five cents on the salary schedule, approximately thirty-seven hours a week, thirty-six hours a week? I don't know how.
It depends.
It's a fair number.
Typically, we're looking at thirty-seven and a half, yes, for most of them.
So that is approximately six dollars and twenty-five cents a week. And like twenty-five dollars in a month. So plus, if you look at, on the same insurance, if you look at the amount of a buyout, did you negotiate something different for the buyout?
We raised that last time. We increased that last time when we're successful. We have more people taking the buyouts now than we did previously. I think the bottom line is that the board had a definite guideline of where they wanted to go as far as how much they were willing to ask the taxpayers to fund. And they also had an idea that they didn't want to get into class war, but rather treat all employees equally. That's, in order to accomplish the one, we had to hold down the other. Was negotiating committee or board kind of?
And that's accurate. And given the fact that this particular negotiating body, the LSS, made a jump in their insurance, like in the cost to the employee, there was an increase that they weren't.
Rate increase.
Yeah, there was that rate increase just a year and a half ago, essentially. When we started the negotiations again, we felt as a board that it was best to hold this this time around. And then when we were looking at the teachers' agreement coming up in the next year, and then the support staff again a year after that, making those adjustments through insurance then. We just felt timing-wise that it would not have worked out to anyone's advantage.
But that, the buyout, though, doesn't get into a class warfare. And how much is, how much is the current buyout?
Two thousand dollars. That was increased last time, I believe.
So here's the, it really wasn't. It was more a question of timing than it was of competing with the local other employers.
As far as the insurance goes, yeah, I mean, I.
Yeah, no, that's right. Yeah, we have all of those bodies.
Yeah. And everybody was.
Yeah.
Because they just absorbed, within the last year and a half, they just absorbed that increase into their insurance costs. That we felt it was bad. And it took quite a bit of convincing to get them to accept that new insurance package.
At last.
The last, last time, yes.
Okay.
So.
But the sentiment this summer from the administrators in terms of being able to find and hire quality employees.
True.
The sentiment was that they would be better off having more money to offer and less of an insurance package.
And.
That was pretty clear-cut this summer.
Right, and we were in agreement in that. But what our intent was to, to get away too much.
It's the negotiating team that has to have the consensus on that, even if that was a goal.
That was the goal going in. We had a set number for hourly increases. We had a significant number that was offered. The, the way the negotiations went, that was not as valuable to their, to their negotiating team.
So they value the insurance.
Over the rate of.
Right.
And an extra day and an extra holiday. That was very, very adamant about that. So while we thought we produced a fair salary increase and more, you know, was definitely a larger amount of money, they came back and decided that they wanted to go in a different direction.
It waits till existing employees rather than future employees.
Right.
Yes. And any thought of creating a structure change where you grandfathered people at this stage and created a new hiring?
Not this time.
That would have to be a, you know, a proposal in the next negotiation or some change like that.
Because if you're going to break the cycle at some point after.
Right, we have to propose a different.
Because I mean, I say that.
And that is typically what is done is against future employees rather than current.
Well, that's right. And we've done that before. We did that when we made the vacation change several years ago to reduce that.
Yeah.
You guys got it somewhere.
I was just trying to say, six dollars and twenty-five cents or whatever it comes out to is not a great decrease. And so that's the one.
We were just as surprised.
Diane, where are you coming up with that six-dollar figure?
She's multiplying the increase.
That is twenty-five cents and thirty-seven and a half hours. So what is that? Maybe I'm.
Yeah, it's a third, so it's a third, it's a roughly twelve dollars.
Plus remember that they are getting paid on holidays.
Or death costs.
Yeah. Diane, they're also getting an extra day paid.
And it's about three hundred fifty dollars.
We're going to sit over for a year.
Yes.
And I've been just doing it five a week. And not all of them, so they, they work like thirty, how many weeks a year do they work?
Look at a hundred eighty-six days rather than weeks. But the additional holidays also represent a pay increase.
When you're talking about holidays, they're already getting paid for school vacation.
No, no, hourly employees.
They are hourly.
And not all holidays, Steve, just the ones you designate.
Okay, so it's a hundred and eighty, well, a hundred and eighty school days plus six days or whatever.
Professional development days.
And now we're adding a couple of paid holidays. They already have the time off. They're not compensated for it.
Right.
So the bottom line, the new money for year one is forty thousand three hundred twelve dollars. And for year two is forty-one thousand four hundred sixty-two dollars. And that's consistent with, with our requirements to prepare the warrant article, to sand-borne eyes the warrant article, where we have to disclose all the, all the costs for each of the periods of the length of a contract, whether it's a labor contract, a release, or something like that.
So the increase.
So you're not surprised next year when I say, and we're increasing the default budget by forty-one thousand dollars?
No, but obviously it's been brought up before at the deliberative sessions. The, the cost in the second year is eighty-three thousand dollars, not forty-one thousand dollars over what we're currently doing.
Over the total cost of this year, yes.
Remember, that was brought up.
That's right, it was.
We had one proposal on, yeah, sorry. Yes, Diane, go ahead.
So this is kind of just an observation. Sometimes we give away things like a one-day or two-day vacation. And then as we're down the road, we start looking at increasing the salary for three years down the road. And then it's those extra days that we're paying for that really adds to the cost of doing business when we should be getting right into the salary schedule. So those are the things that we've gotten ourselves into in the past. And I see that, yes, you know, it's nice. But we never, ever are able to negotiate those out and then start working on the salary schedule. So I have, I have great concerns about that.
Any other questions? Are we ready to take, somebody having a motion to support the, what we're going to call the support staff contract, Tom, is that right?
Yes. Negotiated agreement.
Is there a motion to support the support staff collective bargaining agreement?
Second.
Michael and Dan, any further discussion? All those in favor of supporting the support staff's collective bargaining agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Oh, okay, so that's supported three one.
And along with that, at the bottom of the page, as we typically do with collective bargaining agreement articles, we ask that if the article is defeated, that we are able to hold a special meeting to discuss cost items only and perhaps renegotiate them without the issue of having to go to the court. Getting things to court. So that's standard language anytime we go to the CBA.
Yeah. Okay, so.
So I'd ask for a recommendation on that also.
So Diane, that, you're saying that that's just that, that the standard July vote proposal, if you would?
Uh, yes, yes.
Is there a motion to support authorizing a special meeting if this article fails?
So moved.
Okay, a second? By John, second by Dan. All those in favor of supporting the, the meeting that would occur in the event that the article failed to pass? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, is that an aye, Diane?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so four nothing.
Four say aye. I'm not going to take this one alone.
You're doing a really good job there, Tom.
Yeah, well, I, I'll come back.
Putting his tongue.
Yeah.
Okay, next article is regarding the purchase of land, engineering services and architectural services for a new elementary school. It is somewhat similar to what was proposed and defeated last year. Two primary differences being the price has changed a little from nine hundred thousand down to seven eighty-eight. The other significant difference is looking at a one-time appropriation rather than bonding. Would someone from the board care to discuss the article further?
Last year, you had nine hundred thousand, but I think it was offset by a hundred fifty thousand from.
Yes.
Yes.
So actually, this year is more, in a way.
Yes, in that regard, yes. Difference, the bigger difference, though, is that we were bonding it with last year's article. And this year, it's a one-time appropriation.
Correct. I know that there is a question about timing and about being able to get on the list to be considered by the state. Can someone explain that again to me?
Yeah. Well, we, yes, the state was just funded with building aid. And so there, we were required to submit a letter of intent with just a very broad statement of what we're intending to do by January first of 2020, which we did submit. The next step is, and this is all building up to eligibility for building aid. It's part of the process. The next step would be if the voters wanted to move in this direction of purchasing land and doing architectural and engineering services to get it ready, then the district would have an application that is more extensive to prove that the project is shovel-ready July first, 2020. And then I don't, I don't, I'm not sure what the process of approval is, but the state is getting lots of projects turned in. And so they have a waitlist. And what the number of projects they used to fund in the past, because this time around, they're funding projects with money upfront versus paying it later, they're funding only four or five projects around the state. So people are scrambling to get projects in. The money is not eligible until the next biennium. So even if the land were purchased and the work was done, it would be ready. But I mean, it wouldn't start like in September of next year or July next year, so.
But the amounts expected for the purchase of land and the engineering and architectural costs will be reimbursable if the entire package is approved and we go through with it.
Um, yes, it is, to a certain extent. It's not reimbursable to the taxpayers that would be paying for it. They would not get a refund on their taxes for their benefits now.
I don't get that.
The more that's the next biennium.
It's that much, it's that much less money that would be raised through a bond sale.
Yeah, I fully understand that. I was just wondering, so what would constitute a, what would constitute a, for the town? How much do they have to show that they're applying to budget? Is it both, purchase of property and engineering services?
Yes, of course.
Or can it be engineering services?
Must be shovel-ready.
It doesn't make any sense for me to have engineering and architectural services if I don't have a piece of land.
Yeah, I was just looking at a dollar twenty-three. And I was just wondering if, if the commitment of the people for the engineering services, and then you go forward next year with everything, which included land, you know, that way the taxpayers do not have to put out a dollar twenty-three additional on their tax taxes this year. I was just trying to see if there was a senior way.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
The impact on the, on the taxpayer.
I think, Diane, I think if we move in that direction, then we could not officially apply at the end of, at the end of June for, in order to be put in the list. Because part of that is requirement is you have to show that you have the land as well. So if we waited another year for the land, we officially could not apply until the end, until June of 2021, which then if we've only got four state, you know, potentially four or five projects that'll be approved by the state, we are within that four or five projects now.
Yeah, we are.
If we wait another year, we likely will not be, which means we will be passed over and we will wait till the next time funding comes around. And it could be the next year, but the last time funding was available, I believe, was 2008. So it could be another 10 years. So the question is, is it worth the risk to wait another year and chance that it could be another 10 years? Or do we move on it now?
Can you explain that 10 years, Ben?
So in, in 2008, in 2008 was the last time they offered funding from the state. It's now 2020, twelve, so eight, more than eight years, sorry. It's been 12 years, right? Not 10 years, 12 years. So the question is, if we do not get it in this year and we attempt to go next year with it, we likely will be out of the running because they're going to run out of money. And we will be further on the list than we would be if we applied this year. So instead of being number four this year, potentially, we could fall to being number eight or number 10, which then if they run out of money after the first five or six, we wait until the next time funds are available. They could be available the next year, or like we experienced this last time, it could be another 10 or 12 years.
And the purchase of the property is a must?
It is, in order to apply, it is a must.
And we did re, we did rethink that. I mean, we did try, if there's anything else out there, the important thing was that we had something in our hands, honestly, that we were going to go for a piece of land. So we did relook at it all and ended up again right back with this piece of, piece of land.
I do want to add that we did receive a letter of intent to sell the property to the school district from the Green Acres Cooperation or Foundation. So we do have that in writing. So we do have that in writing.
So I think we're confident in that we followed the process, I mean, we've got the letter of intent in, um, we've got the signed intent to sell. Um, and so we're meeting the guidelines, I know, I know one of the concerns was it was a crunch. It, I, I talked to her like I'm looking at her, it was a crunch, sorry. I'll look over here. It was a crunch and we knew that and everybody worked very diligently to try to get everything together, all the ducks in a row. And we've done that, so far we've done that.
We're in a good position.
Yeah, we are in a good position.
Yeah.
And I think the big difference from last year trying to sell this to this year is that state funding. Last year we were talking twenty million dollars and this year we're talking
Maybe nine.
Nine, ten?
Yeah, nine million.
Right.
I think it's a dollar.
So, you know, if we look back to the opportunity that we missed in two thousand eight, I believe at that time with funding, it was way to be eight million.
Something like that, less.
Or maybe a little less than that. So again, twelve years later, we are more, but we're only more by a fairly small amount when you consider the total project. But when, if and when we get to bonding the school, you still have to bond for the full construction cost, yes?
Yeah, yeah.
That is.
No, you don't.
You don't, oh?
No, the eighty, the eighty percent is paid upfront.
That's.
Okay, right, but when I say upfront, as part of.
So I'm looking at nine million dollars worth of bond basically instead of twenty.
Okay, so you don't have to.
Right. Under, under the previous system, yes, we got, we got the eight each year.
And, and even though that money is not gonna be there on day one per se, but maybe it is. But, but it's gonna be there early enough in the process that it'll be considered cash upfront.
Yeah, the, the eighty, eighty percent of the fifty-five percent is, is paid upfront, whether it's day one or day three.
Yeah.
Um, and then the balance is paid at the end of the project. So, yeah, depending on timing and cash flow.
So, so which amount do you actually end up bonding? Everything except for the eighty percent or everything?
No, I, I bond, right now it's fifty-five state, forty-five town. So I'd be bonding the nine thousand basically.
The forty, the forty-five percent.
Yeah.
Now I have to break that down into the eighty and the twenty. Yeah, Diane, you follow that, okay?
Well, so if it said they now pay upfront eighty-five percent of the fifty-five, when do they, any other fifteen?
On project completion and it's, it's.
Yeah, it's eighty percent, it's eighty percent of the fifty-five percent eligible amount that Littleton is, can acquire, hopefully.
But if this article is successful, that's seven hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars, we won't be bonding, but just still be getting the reimbursement for it.
It'll go into the total cost.
Correct, it's part of the total cost of the project.
Mm-hmm.
So fifty-five percent of that will be.
But you won't be bonding that portion of it because it's already paid for.
And is this fifty-five percent is a real commitment?
It's what the town is eligible for. Different locations have different percentages of eligibility in building.
That's a good question, yeah.
Um, and it's based on, um, I believe free reduce, which comes into play with it, um, I don't know what other parts.
Some other community economic issues.
Economic disparities.
So different communities are eligible for different percentages of building aid. And Littleton's is, at this point in time, is eligible for fifty-five percent of the fifty-five percent.
Do we have a letter of commitment from the state on the fifty-five percent? And would we have a, a commitment from the state that whatever number, um, let's say we're fourth in line? And we move up definitely, um, closer to the front of the line if some of those others do not get a commitment from the town. But do we know for sure that we are, whatever number that is in line?
You can't get that until after the July, uh, application. Uh, because, I mean, it's, it's a competitive round around the state, so some towns are gonna have their preliminary work fail, which opens up, you know, changes the, the queue. Um, and so who is ever is left, you know, changes the game.
And the scoring, the scoring and ranking is not due until next January.
Right, right.
Typically, the, the calendar I saw, the day after a bond hearing has to occur. So that'll be helpful.
It, it's a long process in, um, in getting there, it is.
Well, I was just trying to ask if there was a kind of, not a guarantee, but a guarantee that we wouldn't slide any further back in line. If this passes, would we slide further back in line of eligibility?
We wouldn't know that until we knew all the towns that were trying to pass the same issue.
I think if, let's, for example, say that ten communities put in or have put in a letter of intent as of January first, and let's say by July first of twenty twenty, you're, you have to submit a detailed application and if, say, eight of those did, but the other two didn't, they'd be out of the running.
Right.
The State Board of Education will come up and do a site visit and, and rank those communities. So if our ranking is higher than community number three, we could possibly be number two. So a lot of this, is it risk, is it a risk? Of course it's a risk.
Yeah.
However, we do have to have the land so that we can do architectural and engineering fees on the piece of property. And if we aren't shovel-ready, you can kiss it goodbye and we will not know, like Greg says, maybe for another ten or twelve years, years, will we get any money from the state?
I think it's a risk either way, I think it's a bigger risk if we do nothing.
It depends on the next change in legislation.
Correct.
And the next change in budget.
And that fifty-five percent, I think it's, it is important to note that the, the fifty-five percent number that they're telling us we're eligible for now is the same amount that we were eligible for at the end of last year, when the state came out with the rankings, which had us ranked at, I believe, four, I think so.
So if what we understand is correct, then we're starting in that same place right now. There's nothing official because they haven't gotten all of the applications and the intents in, but that's where we were at the end of the process last year.
But that's, that's the ranking of the state aid percentage, not the ranking of the project.
No, there was that other one, there was that other one that actually ranked us at either third or fourth for, for project.
So in, in the same process, we're trying to get this building aid, once the state board ranks these communities in whatever way they rank them, uh, and then the next year, we would have another warrant article on for the perch, for the whole design, the whole building construction, everything. And they would then send us an intent to fund, to fund the appropriation.
And so the, in that article, that bonding article, instead of being a twenty million dollar article, will, will be roughly an eight, eight and a half million.
Eight million, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Do you have an estimate, uh, because there is a formula, um, uh, the outside, that part, figure for the whole project? You know, per grip, but per student, for all of that, do you have any, um, estimate on that?
Well, all of those guidelines are in the construction manuals that are on the Department of Ed website on what you have to follow when you're doing that. The only thing I can speak to is that last year I believe the estimated cost was gonna be nineteen million for the construction of a building, the whole project. So we've been just rounding it up to twenty million because a year, three, three years later, the cost's gonna go up.
Question, does, does this proposal include any, um, costs for the current Lakeway site when it's vacated as far as raising it or trying to sell it or redevelop it? Or what are you gonna do with that?
No, it doesn't, Diane.
So that's gonna be a cost.
But I think what we were trying to do as a board would be to sell the property.
Yeah.
Which might be able to go into the funding eventually. But there's no money set aside for that.
But you might be considering.
Yeah, well, it's a good question, yeah.
Some, some amount because you can't just, you know, walk away. There, there'd probably be a lag between, you know, once you vacate the building and trying to, to, to sell it and when that actually occurs, and so there's gonna be some, some costs associated with the district to keep that safe, um, situation.
That'll probably be an operating.
Yeah, that would be, that would be an operating budget, I'd like.
Yeah. Well, no, it's a good point, I mean, because we were, we were in discussions with real estate people and.
And we'll drive it higher, we'll know.
Ideas for, for considering the building or.
Right, and it could be a while before it does change.
Yeah, absolutely.
There's a lot.
That's a good point.
I can tell you, just, just as a, an anecdote, is, you know, in Berlin they closed the last elementary school. Uh, and they put an R, that closed in June, they put an RFP out, uh, late summer and they now have an agreement, I believe, with a developing company, um, that is gonna make high-end apartments out of it.
Yeah.
So that's a pretty quick turnaround because the last building that we closed off, another elementary special that we closed, it took a couple of years for a developer to purchase it and they also made apartments in them.
Marlet.
Marlet, yeah. Yeah.
Maybe after Josiah Bar.
That's right, yes.
Could you speak to that shovel-ready, uh, issue again?
July this year, right?
I mean, you can't be shovel-ready.
And that's a phrase.
Well, that's a phrase, you know, it's. It's what they consider shovel-ready. It's, which, which.
You wouldn't even have your.
You wouldn't have your contractor and stuff, you're right.
No, it's bigger to be.
We're talking shovel-ready, they mean that, that we have a total estimate for the building.
On paper.
On paper, the engineering for roadway, sewer, electric, whatever would need to be brought to the site, preliminary design.
Okay, so you're drawing for, so I mean, so.
Yes, it's not gonna be like, we're not gonna build tomorrow.
But no, no, but all of that would be in place by July first. It has to be submitted by July first.
On paper.
That's your engineering services. That's your engineering structure.
Well, there's a whole bunch of papers that have to be filled out by July first, yeah.
It doesn't mean you have to have an agreement with the architectural engineering firms, all of this kinda stuff already in place by that day.
I'm not sure if we have to have the agreement by then, really?
The plan, you mean the completed plans, I don't believe.
We're, well, we couldn't, we're not available to the work that's been done if, if we don't have an agreement to move forward.
Right.
You, you, there's no way you could have the drawings ready to go, but you could have an agreement with a firm.
No, well, we, we, we do have preliminary drawings.
Preliminary drawings.
We do have that, we just have a tentative agreement and that, but kinda, everything's kind of a.
That was all done for last year.
Yeah.
And I'll remind you that we couldn't spend any money on it this year because our article was defeated last year.
What was the vote last year?
Uh, it was less than a hundred.
Thirty-eight, I think it was within thirty-eight votes, it could have been sixty percent.
That's something.
For sixty percent.
Yeah, we.
Yeah, thirty-eight for fifty percent, but it, it was a bonded warrant article, but it wasn't required at fifty percent some votes.
Right, yeah.
Um, and just to get back on the building and make, uh, the building aid rate of fifty-five percent, what the Department of Ed did was award a specific rate to every community should they apply.
Right.
So it's specific fifty-five percent to, uh, Littleton, town of Littleton.
Is it possible, um, if we went forward on this and say we got a ranking of number three, that the first and second ranked projects would exhaust the available funds in, allocated in the biennium? And then we would be responsible for the hundred percent of the project? Or, or would we somehow get preference for the next two-year cycle?
Our, our position would move up actually. Like you, like you said, we're number three and they only fund the first two, then we become number one the next, the next round.
Our project would not go forward pending the, the allocation of the funds from the state.
Correct.
Now we're flipped to the next biennium?
And in some, and they're also getting the money each year of the biennium. So they may exhaust the first year of funds.
So maybe.
Um, two, the second year. Yeah, it's, it's complicated.
Okay, so it could happen within the biennium, but then the second half of it.
And it's also possible that the first two projects are not that large.
Mm-hmm.
But they run out of money before they get to number four, you know, so it's, it's gonna be interesting to see how it all plays out.
Yeah, it is, it is quite a, quite a process to get there.
We had issue of. So this is a dollar twenty-three, just for this warrant article, right?
Yes.
And for the operating budget or the, the, the budget and the support staff contract, how much is that? I mean, I didn't quite hear that's a very skinny.
That's on the top page that you were sent, the summary sheet?
Okay. So we're up to, um, we're less than, we're, we're like at a dollar twenty-one thus far. Just about, okay.
Yeah, a dollar twenty-four.
Is the total.
A dollar twenty-four, okay.
Well, yes, we're up to a dollar twenty.
A dollar nineteen right now, yeah?
I'm looking at a dollar twenty-four.
Oh, okay, okay.
A dollar, okay, alright.
Because we still have.
I guess, just for your information, the, the budget committee is looking at both the school and the town. And so we have a little panic mode in our voices is because, um, with the total amount that you're projecting of a dollar twenty-four, the, the town is at seventy-four cents. And so we're looking at a dollar ninety-eight total.
Seven hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars. A second?
Second.
No further discussion, all those in favor of supporting the elementary school land and engineering article, please say aye.
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 That's supported four zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
So let's continue. As we originally discussed with the operating budget, we were trying to keep things as level-funded as possible with the increase in revenue, the items that we knew we had to be concerned about with health insurance and teachers' contracts, the other items. We made some other cuts that came out of the operating budget. One of them that did come out, we're taking a cue from some other folks, we're putting it as an article. The pillars and the clock tower at the high school are in desperate need of repair, is it just repair or complete rehabilitation?
I think not quite complete rehabilitation, but not far off from.
The next best thing, huh?
Any more delay, they give you CPR now.
More than just new paint, more than just a new coat of paint.
I don't think we should spend more than two minutes on this, but is it a structural or a cosmetic issue?
It has the potential to be structural. At this point, it's not. However, we removed it from the operating budget in order to be, in order to put it back into the town's opinion or in their vote. This is the facade of our school. It's that you see it from the highway, you see it from downtown. We felt that it was important enough for the town people to keep that facade aesthetically pleasing, that the town needed to make that decision, so we removed it from the operating budget to be able to let the town make the decision if that was important to them. And the reserve funds that we have for building maintenance could not absorb that, so we did not have it at all.
They could.
You know, just thinking, obviously, what you're trying to sell, and I know it's only five cents if you would, obviously, kind of loaded, obviously, tends to recognize, you know, measures taken by both the school and the town to do things that in such a fashion to keep them away from the tax rate, especially in years where we're asking for a big commitment. So I'm not sure where those funds are now, but we generally have some fairly significant money.
And we've been using them over the last couple of years, too. Anything that we dedicate to a particular project, of course, can't be used for anything else. He issues.
Well, sometimes at least if you can say, well, you know, we're doing X, Y, and Z to minimize the impact of this, which you're already saying, I mean, obviously, you can make a commitment for what you've already done on the operating budget, and, anyway, I'm just thinking that's another, another option. I'm not sure what the balances are in those, and do you have any other projects for this year that you were going to take out of those funds?
That's a whole nother issue. No, I don't have that much.
I think you said the other night, Tom, because I don't have an updated figure, that you said we only had 72,000 left in the facilities.
Facilities, that sounds about right, but I'm.
And equipment, we only had 42,000. So could we split 30,000, which probably could, but someone asked us to put another roof block, so that probably won't be.
That covers the.
And are we going to be asking this year to apply any financial surpluses to put into the reserve accounts?
Not to those funds.
It's a good question.
Wait, I didn't hear you.
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
Are we going to be asking this spring for authority to put any surplus funds into any of our reserve accounts?
Only one which is following, and it's not either of those funds.
It's not of maintenance. The question is, if we have that amount of money, then our, yep, why not use it, why not use that 30 to do our clock tower?
Unless it's at a level.
I mean, that's an answer, but.
Well, I don't know.
No, unless it's at a level that you need it for emergencies.
That's the problem.
If you don't want to give it all.
Yeah. And we know that.
Like Steve, I'm thinking.
Well, no. We have it, but it's a cost. Yeah, the concern is that we, that Lake Way gets us every time.
We're about $72,000 uncommitted in facilities right now.
People look at the reserve account and wonder why they're not being used to do things like this, but the unfunded balance at the end of the year, the school board reaping 200,000 of it, and I know that has its own specifications from the state and its own feature, but people look at that as total amount and wonder why don't we use them?
I, we have committed $102,000 out of that fund right now for this year.
Which one, Tom?
The facilities.
Facilities.
Over last year and this year, you've got $102,000 committed.
Out of which fund?
Facilities.
Facilities. Okay, I think Diane was talking about the, Diane, where'd you talk about the $200,000, 2% reserve?
Well, I think, Tom is, I'm kind of talking about both of them. Tom is talking about that you have committed $102,000, but we as public do not know what those, that money is going towards. So let's just say on the, on the town side, they will say X amount of dollars for a project, but we are using 15,000 of it from the, from unfunded, you know, balance at the end of the year. And we don't hear that on the school side, so you, we have $102,000 committed, but the town doesn't know what those projects are. They have no idea. And so there's limitations there, too, that needs to probably, you know, happen.
Anyway, well, I just asked a question, just because obviously if you're trying to pare things down to make it as saleable as possible, but anyway, if that, if, basically, I guess if you think that the fund is down to a point where you need to maintain it for unanticipated maladies, then maybe that's as slow as it should go.
And we won't be asking to add anything to that fund.
We can talk about it.
Okay. Is there, is there a motion to support the, the LHS pillars and clock tower fund? Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
Not this year.
So it's aborted, 3-1.
Well, the last article that I have on the sheet is for the special education capital reserve fund. So that is the fund that we're looking for funding for.
And it's just out of sequence, Tom, for whatever reason?
Oh, from the public sheet?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was the last two weeks.
You're right.
My fingers unnecessarily work, isn't it? You saw that we were trying to front them as you were sitting down to start your meeting and stuff.
I'm just asking, in case I was missing something, so, okay. So the explanation of that is?
Okay. Couple of things. In the revenue side of the operating budget, we have, just over the last couple of years, included an item for catastrophic aid, a special ed aid is called now, which theoretically we become eligible for some support for the state when we exceed three and a half times the average cost per student, and then they decide how much they, they want to contribute towards that. It hasn't been an awful lot in prior years, until a couple of years ago, we weren't even getting any threshold. So we've had $40,000 of revenue in the operating budget worksheets for the last couple of years. This year, with the change in the state budget and what happened to us last year in terms of our special education costs. Revised revenue, when the Department of Revenue sat down with me to look at revised revenue for tax rate setting, we increased the amount of special ed aid from 40,000 to 73,664. And that $33,000 and change was money that was not raised in taxation with the December When we actually received the money from the state, it came in at $124,000. So we're looking at $50,609 that we have received in revenue that will be difficult to use. Theoretically, excess aid and, aid in excessive anticipation for special education can be used to support special education costs if you go into a deficit. We don't want to go into a deficit. We have $400,000 in special ed added district tuition in this year's budget. We have $400,000 in added district tuition in the proposed budget for next year. Our current commitments in this budget year is just under $670,000 or $270,000 of our budget. We're doing some scrambling. It's entirely possible that we may have to draw from the special ed capital reserve fund, which is about $159,000 right now. We may have to draw from that before the end of the year. Hopefully not. If we do, that's why it's there. What we're asking for with this article is to take the $50,000 that was unanticipated, which will fall to surplus, and put those monies into the capital reserve fund for special education. Another option might be to increase the operating budget. Where we're at right now doesn't look like a really good position. You had some thoughts on that the other evening, did you want to elaborate?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that we are over budget this year by over a quarter million dollars in special ed. What's that?
Did you mean under?
Under budget, sorry, under budget.
Well, over spent.
Overspent, overspent. We knew where he was going. After talking with Kelly as well as Tom, there's no predicted change in that number due to either a student aging out or students coming back into the district that are out of district placements. Therefore, it should be expected that we will be exceeding that 400,000 by the same amount next year. Therefore, I think it's financially irresponsible of the board if we don't do something to answer that for next year. One of the options was, as Tom just said, is increasing the special ed budget, which we initially discussed on Monday in non-public about adding additional money to the special ed fund. Then the argument came up that we have these, this fund as well as our capital reserves, and would it be better that we utilize that rather than increasing, increasing the general budget? So one of the things that we talked about is, as the budget committee, you are an advisory board to us, so we made the decision that we wanted to come to you and get your thoughts on what you felt as the advisory board, the best direction would be for us to take. Would it be to increase the operating budget? Or would it be to move those funds into the reserve funds and then you, and then access those should we need them? At this point, there's no, there's not, there's no sign that shows us that next year we are not going to need them.
And this won't address all, the whole thing, it just makes the shortfall.
Just makes a shortfall, less than what it is this year. Yep. So really, we did not finalize this article per se because we're looking to you as an advisory committee to give us some guidance. We can, we can see going in either direction. What we need to know really is what, what do you feel as an advisory committee the town will support most, knowing the other projects such as the elementary school project we're trying to get past, knowing we've got the support staff contract, you know, what do you feel would be in the best interest of the school district and meet the needs that we need to meet, as well as in the best interest of our community and citizens, taxpayers?
Is a 50,000 an arbitrary number?
No, that's the difference between the revised estimate used for second taxes this year and the amount we actually receive from government. That's, that's the difference.
Where to put that 50, where to put that amount of money?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I think the Town of Littleton certainly understands special ed and they understand commitments, so I, you know, I think people certainly accept if you, if you tell them that their, our out of base, district placement cost is $669,000, they realize that that is what it is, and we only do that, obviously, I think everybody knows that we run a very active in-house program, so nobody is placed outside unless absolutely necessary. So I, Diane, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I do. I totally understand why they are concerned. I understand that they want to make sure that they have adequate money there. I'd say that we don't have to dip into the account. I can't remember the last time, perhaps maybe you can let us know. When have we ever tapped into this reserve account for special education? Has that happened?
I don't think you've drawn on it from the time I've been here. We also haven't added anything to the fund for the last four or five years, I believe.
Correct. So having that in mind, in case we do not have to tap into it this year, and we do decide to support this, and we increase it by that amount of money, would it be possible to have an understanding that next year, some of this, this reserve account would go into the budget to offset the proposed budget? I'm trying to say, I think of maybe having a cap on the amount, in a sense, and not have monies, substantial money, that has to be sitting in a reserve account and not being utilized, and we haven't, we haven't utilized it thus far. And I understand that we have a situation, but I also believe that the voters or the taxpayers don't like to just see large amounts, you know, with different accounts that's not being used.
I think really our options are if we were to go to utilizing the capital reserve funds and go that route, if we end up using them in full next year, which at this point would likely be the case, then next year we are going to be asking the town one of two things. Refund, or fund that balance back to what it was, or increase our operating budget so that the next year.
Probably both.
And it may be a mix of both, absolutely. So, and that would be what we have to do next budget cycle would be. One, one question, and Diane, I think there's a little, little bit maybe where you were headed. If next year ends up being a, if we vote this in the affirmative and it goes in there, and next year ends up being better than anticipated, that we have, you know, I expect you good luck.
Kids come home, or somebody lives out of district.
Does the, would the school board have the option to fund part of the special education cost by using some of that money, maybe this $50,000 to bring it back down? Is that an option? That wants the money, and you know, let's say, let's say you have a budget of $400,000 and you end up, and you end up having a $450,000 expense that you could, actually, you could say, well, we're going to take $50,000 out of there to basically bring it down so that our budgeted amount will fund our.
If we drew it from the capital reserve fund, then that would reduce the balance in the capital reserve fund.
Right.
If we use other funds available within the operating budget, like we're scrambling for now.
Yeah.
Then that would reduce surplus.
Yeah.
Either way.
Yeah, I'm just saying, as an option, if we're wondering about putting too much in or having it too high, which I know, obviously, given the enormity of the dollars is probably.
I don't think $400,000 is too high.
Exactly, that's right. But I'm just asking that if, you know, if we did have some good fortune, if you would, and let's say that our, our actual expenses ended up being 450, and we had budgeted 400, is there, is there an option for the school board to say, okay, that 50,000 that we put in there, we're going to use that 50 to basically level, to keep the budgeted amount for special ed at the $400,000 figure, on tax dollars?
I'm not aware of a legal reason why we couldn't do that.
Diane, any other further questions?
No, I, I, I just want to reiterate that people who have the reserve accounts, and they want to know if they're being used, and you are making the buildings, the one for building improvements. However, we haven't seen anything come out of the. However, we haven't seen anything come out of the, and thankfully so, out of the, um, special education one. But if we put it in and then we don't use it and we don't tap into it, I think it sends a long message to the taxpayers. So I'm, I was just hoping to clarify that, that the board would consider using funds from that to offset future, um, future amounts.
Okay, is there a motion to support the special ed capital reserve fund from surplus in the amount of fifty thousand, six oh nine? A second? All those in favor of supporting the special ed capital reserve fund from surplus amount of fifty thousand, six oh nine, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That's supported, four zip.
My question is, will it be more palatable to the taxpayers to speed in a warrant article or to just have the operating budget increased by that amount, you know, but?
Right, that's why we're, I took the discussion because we really went back.
Yeah, we didn't know either.
Because the argument's up all sudden.
Yeah, right.
Support it, I guess.
Anyway, but to put things in perspective, you know, this nice cover sheet, Tom, that you did, and based on what we know now from the town, and I'm not sure how, Diane, how much of the speed the town is on what the school figures are, any sense? Diane, you there still?
I am. Um, I had sent forward that we, what Corvine had sent out to us yesterday, um, last evening to the town, and, um, I was told by Karen that they really didn't know what was happening on the school budget. So that's the reason why I forwarded that to, to them. Other than that, I don't think that they're aware of what's going on at Kent High's first up.
Because, you know, on that cover sheet Diane was on, listed the potential impact of a hundred and fif, on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar value homeowner's property at being a hundred and eighty-six dollars. You know, knowing what we know about the town as per proposed budget and articles, that a hundred and eighty-six dollars could very well be three hundred dollars.
Two ninety-seven if you combined it with the tablet and everything were passed.
So, which, which I'm not sure how many times in the history of Littleton we've had a three hundred dollar property tax increase in one year.
Right. Um, we could certainly invite the school board and the superintendent to our next meeting with town. We have two darn articles left on the town side to discuss and also to discuss the total impact, um, of all their warrant articles on, on the tax rate. That is what, the sixteenth, the thirteenth, the sixteenth, four o'clock at the Opera House.
We have our budget hearing, Diane.
That's our budget hearing, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that your budget hearing?
That is, sir.
Yeah, our budget hearing is scheduled for five thirty, is what I have down.
You're right, thank you.
I know that it's, that's a crunch time, but if anyone could make it at four, that would be wonderful.
Where is it again? Littleton Opera House?
It's at the Opera House in the tower room.
And Diane, is that for sure in the Opera House and not at the community house?
Yes, it is.
Very, thank you.
Can the time again?
And if, and if the school people could be there, we could certainly make it the first item on the agenda. They wouldn't be waiting around for whatever. You know, if we wanted to just have fifteen or twenty minute discussion with the selectmen just to share their thoughts, ideas, or concerns, then we could, we could move on to the rest of our stuff.
Yeah.
Does that sound reasonable, Diane?
That sounds very reasonable. Um, I think we all have a big question mark on how this is going to work, so we're all interested in this and we all want everyone to be showcased in the best possible way. So, um, your suspicion is, is really needed and welcome.
Is there anything else tonight?
No, we accomplished what we said we had to accomplish.
Wasn't that enough?
Sorry, can't get it to chill off.
It's okay. They'll hang up eventually.
Thank you, everyone. I'll hang up now.
Diane, thank you much, Diane. Enjoy the mother and a real chat. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
I have, I have a few questions, just, okay? A general question, so I had time.
The meeting, are you, before the meeting is closed or?
Well, um, I don't know. My first rodeo on this type of meeting. I'm thinking I have a school budget hearing next Thursday and a deliberative session to follow and just have some questions. Do I want to start putting things together? Do people like or want information on the state aid portion of it? What makes up that state aid for town Littleton? If not, probably.
Oh, I, I mean, I'd say yes.
Big, enormous, yes.
More information is better, absolutely.
Definitely the effect on the tax, tax rate, I would think would be a big thing.
So one sixteen, six P M is your budget hearing?
Yes.
And the cap hearing?
Yes.
And the deliberative session is?
The February fifth? At six o'clock, I believe, the same location.
And no budget here, no, no bond hearing?
No, I just read that.
The other B word.
Is there anything else that would be valuable for the people who attend the budget hearing or come to the deliberative that you feel they should have, I mean, other than the standard budget presentation, what's in it, what are we asking for, how our kids are doing, what's our enrollment trends? Is there anything that people might want?
I think, I think the questions are going to come up again that they did last year regarding the property. And having, having Kyle here, I think, would be beneficial. We had him here last year.
Okay.
I think introducing him to the group again, you know, what we did at the beginning is important. Letting him speak on the questions of the wetlands that would like to come up again.
Yes.
The questions regarding water, sewer, you know, the stuff that we asked the other night at the meeting. Certainly, and certainly if people want to, want to hear a lot of those answers, a lot of those questions were asked this past Monday at our school board meeting. If you were to wash that off our website, a lot of those questions were answered at the school board meeting. But having them the ability to answer the same questions is.
Because that's a different.
Absolutely.
You never know for sure who's going to show up. And was it two years ago where we adjourned and reconvened because?
Yes.
Was it two or three?
You couldn't have a snow day. I think that's what it was.
There were a lot of questions that we just weren't prepared.
Yeah, it was either two, it was either two years ago, three years ago, it was not last year. Last year was smooth, it was the year before.
When you're underprepared, that's.
Absolutely.
And they did not have that, and so that, that caused a lot of.
Yeah. And last year, we came prepared.
It was important that we learned the other night that part of the town's water and sewer plant is developed. Are you ready to open?
The town deliberative and the, and the two fives.
Steve?
All right, so this is, this is the other key point that we learned that I think would be important at this, if you agree. We learned the other night that in meeting with the town, at least the architect.
Kyle has met with the town.
About the future of their development of water and sewer. They have on their books their plan to develop water and sewer at the Green Acres area. So that we're not asking for something in addition to in someplace remote. It falls in line with the town plans.
Well, that's sub-area, whatever.
Yeah.
The top of Heatherly, I think, is one of the areas that they're developing.
Yeah, that was kind of another, like, oh, okay, so there's another window of opportunity. So just want to put that out.
And if you could, if you could fund that sub-area fire, that's part of the problem, that'd be even better.
Wouldn't it be like a big sale? All right, are we done? Any more questions from anybody?
Thank you all.
Discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
California.
They mentioned about, Stephen mentioned about us coming to the next, for the selectman meeting. What, that's on the sixteenth?
Thursday, four o'clock.
And we could, we'd make it the four o'clock item, so.
And what would be the item? School?
You're just, I mean, just to give you a chance to, you and the town, you know, spend fifteen, twenty minutes.
To give us an overview of just what we're working on.
Just so the, the selectman know where you're.
Okay, good. It's a good thing.